With that, there's no gavel to start, so we'll just knock on the table. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every king and every justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Benko, could we have the roll call, please?
Mrs. Britton?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. DeShaw?
Here.
Mr. Delauter?
Here.
Mr. Eifert?
Here.
Mr. Emig?
Here.
Mrs. Herman?
Here.
Mrs. Maylie?
Here.
Mr. Rahauer?
Here.
All members are present.
Okay, first on our agenda is the Board reorganization portion of the meeting. First on the agenda for tonight is the election of a temporary Board President. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to nominate and elect a temporary Board President. Do we have a motion?
I move Dennis DeShaw.
That was a nomination for Dennis. We'll do the motion first to actually conduct the process. So could I have a motion to conduct the process?
Why? Yeah, for, you said you need somebody to do the-
We need a motion to start the process.
That's what I thought I made.
No, you did a nomination for Dennis. That'll come in a minute.
Okay.
You want to make a motion?
I move that we have a temporary-
All right, do we have a second? Second?
Second.
All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. With that, we will have the nominations for a temporary president. Mr. Rahauer, you want to do? Mr. DeShaw?
You are on your mic, I can't hear you, you're not on your microphone.
Do you want to do Mr. DeShaw? Is that your nomination? Okay.
I thought, you know, he could do that job. That way he's safe from getting another-
Are there any other nominations? Okay, with that, we have the nomination of Mr. DeShaw for temporary president. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes, opposed? Motion carries. Mr. DeShaw.
(laughing).
Okay, I guess we're right here. Yeah, we're right here, right? We have to do that.
Temporary president issue.
Okay. I call for nominations from the floor. Any board members?
She needs to say it.
Oh, okay. I got it. Thanks, Chuck. Motion to nominate-elect Board President for a one-year term. Does anybody, yeah, want to open it?
I name, yeah, I nominate Nathan Eifert.
There he goes.
Second?
Okay. Any other names for president?
Just right here, names. Motion to not, to open nominations for the president for a one-year.
Right. Okay. Yeah, we just did that right there. Oh, did, okay. Okay, does anybody second the motion?
Open the nominations?
Yes.
I'll, I second the nomination.
All right. All of those in favor?
Can you, I say, can you?
All those in favor?
Can you read what we're voting on, please?
Motion to nominate Nathan Eifert as the Board President for a one-year term.
Open the nominations.
Yes, a motion to nominate a slash-elect Board President for a one-year term.
If we didn't make that, if we didn't make that motion, I'll make that motion.
Yes.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay. All those in favor?
Yes.
There we go.
Yes.
Okay. I call for nominations-
From the floor.
From the floor.
We've got too much background noise.
Okay.
This time for taking nominations for Board Presidents.
Yes.
I place a nomination, the name of Nate Eifert, for the office of President. I'll second that.
Take a nomination.
Yeah. Any other names? Seeing none, if there's no objections, I declare the nominations closed. With the nominations of Nathan Eifert, if there are no objections, I declare the nominations closed. With one, yeah, with one nomination, our Board Secretary will cast the ballot for Nathan Eifert. Thank God. Not prepared for that.
Benko, I had an error message come up on my computer, is that, okay?
Should now have their voting option.
Do you wish to serve as the Board President, Nathan?
Sure.
Good, come get it.
Thank you very much, I appreciate everybody's confidence in me.
Why are you running from that chair?
If anyone's confused about what just happened there, the school code requires the selection of a temporary president for board organization, and that's what just took place before the president is selected.
Thank you again, everyone. Next on the agenda will be a motion to nominate and elect a Board Vice President for a one-year term. Do we have a motion to elect a Board Vice President?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Okay. With that, I call for nominations from the floor for Board Vice President.
I nominate Mr. Delauter.
Are there any other nominations?
No.
Seeing none, and if there are no objections, I will declare the nominations closed. And with only one nomination, our Board Secretary will cast the ballot for Mr. Delauter. Congratulations, Mr. Delauter. Would you like to make a statement?
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Cook will continue to serve as Treasurer of the District until such time elections occur for the Treasurer's position. With that, we will move on to the Board Committee Organization for 2017. Do we have a motion to appoint the Board Committee Representatives for 2017 as listed in your agenda? We have a motion, is there a second? Any questions or discussions related to the committees and the liaisons?
Is this pretty much how it's been? I don't think there's any changes, okay.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Benko? Next on our agenda is the Board Meeting Dates for 2017. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve those Board Meeting Dates as presented in our agenda for 2017.
No move.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or discussions related to this? Are these-
DeShaw in November, we're going to move it up a week.
It's November the holiday.
You all have a calendar in front of you, and it, the dates there that were proposed are circled on there, and yes, November was moved up to the second week of the month due to Thanksgiving being on that Thursday.
Any other questions or discussion?
Yes, I'm not in favor of reorganization on the 4th. I feel we should set the 5th of the month as our date regarding used in the future, and hopefully that'll work out because the 4th is a date that don't work for some Board Members.
My only concern is if we pick a specific day, then if it falls on like a Friday or Saturday or Sunday, we might have an issue with the date then. I'd almost rather we say, if we're going to set a standard, that we do like the first Monday, the first Tuesday, first Wednesday, Thursday of the month.
What I wanted to say was this first Tuesday of December.
First Tuesday of December every year.
And then make that for, you know, a future.
Okay.
And that way we fall in with meeting in the first week of December. And that meets our guidelines.
Anybody else want to add to that?
Just curious what the, what the conflict is. Is there, is it a conflict with school activities, or what?
Mrs. Maylie?
He's actually speaking up for me because I, I work Monday nights, I, I mean, that far in advance, I can move things around, but I, I know Charlie's looking out for my best interests, and I appreciate that, but that's, I believe, where his comment's coming from.
Would make it a Tuesday or a Thursday, that's our other days.
How would everybody feel about just establishing the first Tuesday of every month as reorganization? Make that a permanent switch? Good with that?
Mr. President, if I may, and I don't think this is a grave concern, but I should advise, if you're not already aware, that the terms of office run to that first Monday of December. So usually doesn't create a major concern for boards to have the expiration of a term on Monday and to reorganize on a Tuesday, but I just thought I should make the Board aware of that.
Where would the greatest issue be with that, Mr. Field?
It really isn't an issue, the most important thing is that you reorganize that first week of December, but the, the term of office officially expires on that first Monday of December.
Are we willing to wait one day? All right. Okay. I think we'll then go with the first Tuesday of December. Are there any other questions on any of the other dates at this point?
Will the first meeting still be the voting meeting, and the second meeting still be the committees?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, Mrs. Benko? Next on our agenda is Mr. Wassler with a presentation on the High School Course of Study.
It's a long walk from back there. Be good. This is the presentation we shared with the Curriculum Committee back in November. At that time, we were asked to present it with, to you guys here. I believe, my understanding is that you guys have already seen the Course of Studies, you've had some access to that as well as this presentation, so I'm just going to go through the presentation again to kind of provide some key points to where the rationale behind what we presented to you came from. Hopefully the clicker actually worked, success. We have five core goals that we've identified, and in the program of studies, this is really what is driving that Course of Studies you're seeing. The first is strengthening that college and career pathways. As we start to look at the academy model with careers, and we start looking at college and career pathways for our students, we found an opportunity with our Course of Studies to restructure some things to strengthen the pathways programs for each and every student. So that was one core goal. A second was integrating courses between CTE and General Education. We've been very fortunate, Mr. Benton, to grow a very successful CTE program in a pretty short period of time. Most CT programs in-house take some serious time and effort, and a very short window, they have grown a very successful, rapidly growing one. We now have an opportunity, though, to take those programs and not have a school within a school, but really integrate both of those things together and create some opportunities for kids to see that CTE is not a separate entity, nor is the educational side, that they're all educational components. So we tried to do that. Our third goal was to try to continue development of a personalized learning model. As we look at each and every student, we wanted our core goals to reflect personalized learning, that goes along with the pathways, that goes along with advisory, but really looking at what each and every student needs to be successful in the 16th grade. Not 12th grade graduation, but four years after graduation, do we do our job with our kids. That fourth piece is looking at strengthening our college preparatory offerings. We had a lot of things going different directions, but we want to expand some of those, but also strengthen what we offer to our students. And that fifth goal was the blended learning component. As cyber offerings have come back and also grown, we've seen some growing pains with that that we've worked through, but we have an opportunity to really strengthen the blended learning design, particularly with the one-on-one, one-to-one initiative. So what that looks like in meeting our goals in the Course of Studies, I get to try to read this from across the room, I'm looking old. The strengthening college and career pathways piece, first of all, is next year is the first class that will come in, that weird, turning's weird, but we're looking to launch the career academies with our ninth grade class coming in this fall. And so the group this year is actually working, Mr. Benton and Mr. Barnes, right now, we have a ninth grade advisory team of students who are working to build a ninth grade advisory program for our students for next year. So they are the pilot group, they are also developing it for the next generation. But as we look to strengthen that and introduce it, we need to have that pathways model in place. Also, we're looking to align course structure and timelines for college modeling. Half-credit classes were a bygone era of the traditional model of eight periods a day when you had kids for 90 and 180. When we introduced the trimester, half-credits had to come into the model because that's how that works. Now we're back to a full block semesterized model, so we have half-credits at 45 days, half-credits at 90 days, and we have the traditional 90 and 180 days. So there's too many models going on, and we're trying to get it back to a true semesterized college model of Semester 1, Semester 2. From the integrated piece, we have some new courses in there that are actually co-taught by CTE and General Education, particularly the art class. Under personalized learning, there's a personalized learning plan we're launching. You'll see some new courses based on high-need independent study, for example, Human Anatomy and Physiology II, that traditionally is 14 to 15 independent studies that you all approve a year. If there's 15 kids a year looking for it from an independent study, that shows a need in our building for students to have that as an integrated course. As we also look, we're looking at varying the timeline, support different sheet styles, and also that removal of half-credit options. Under four, we're looking at reducing redundant college preparatory courses. So right now, we have, for example, AP Government and College and the High School Government. One is taught for 45 days, one is 90 days, they both offer the same curriculum and the same credits. We are offering a redundant course, so looking at that with departments, how do we reduce the redundancy and make a singular program that we can put more effort into and more resources and make it better for our kids? The other piece, then, is realigning our AP courses to meet needs and timelines. AP Bio currently runs a semester and a half as this Calc. Calc is going down to one semester with BC sliding behind it, so kids can get a full year of two years of calculus mixed in, but also the AP Chem, which runs two credits, AP Bio will now match that at two credits, because if you look around us, most science courses with lab-based models need that length. And then the last piece there is migrating all of our cyber courses to ed options. We've left Plato behind largely except for driver's ed. Everything else has migrated to ed options, provides us an instructor for the course. So real quick piece here, just so you can see it, this is what a sample four-year plan will look like for our students. So the idea is that a student meets with their counselor and advisor, identifies, oh, that worked, identifies what their college and career goal is, and then sits down based on grad requirements and structures a four-year plan for how they're going to be prepared for that after high school. And so the idea is that a kid backward maps, which means some of our courses will now be offered every other year. So if a student wants it, and it's not in their sophomore year, they have to know it's only available in junior year, they have to be able to plan for that. Also, prerequisites, they can plan out to make sure there's not something missing. The other piece of this is that, as we look at this, it allows us to identify for each and every student their specific goal and provide better counseling services. So this really meets a couple needs for us. As we look at where our major revisions come in, the first is, you'll notice, there's no longer a standalone half-credit class. One of the issues we run into is that a half-credit class runs 45 days. In 45 days, about 20 to 22 days in, you actually know the needs of your students, you've got about 20 days left to work with them. For the relationships component and better serving our kids, we need a full semester. And so working with departments, they went back and took the courses that used to be 90, that they had shrunk down to 45s, and have reextended them back to 90-day curriculum. The courses that were 45, they have either mixed with something else to create two classes into one to make a stronger course, or they've, again, structured the curriculum to extend it for more personalized learning. The only places you'll see half-credit classes, we still offer the half-credit course and a half-credit band program for those students who do both, because for scheduling purposes, they do a half and a half so they can fit it in one semester and still take both of those classes. The other places in PE, the PE department talked about some needs for their structure, we still offer driver's ed, which because of the state and the number of hours we provide is still a half-credit course. So we've paired a 10th grade PE option back up with it. If students don't choose driver's ed, there is a full-credit 10th grade PE. So there's multiple pathways within that model for students who choose either option if they choose to go forward. But those are the only half-credits traditionally you will still see in the Course of Studies. Some of those may transition in later years, but this year we thought it was best to leave them, so it would still work with our current structure. The second piece up there is eliminating the cyber option for physical education without medical exemption. Right now, our number one cyber class is PE. They only have to take one PE class to graduate high school right now over a four-year period, so a student saying, "I don't have time for PE in the fall of my freshman year, so I'd like to do it online," doesn't really meet the fact we still have three and a half years to do it. The other reason is that a lot of our students that are taking cyber PE, we've looked at the course, they don't have to verify any type of physical activity, which is the goal of physical education. They simply have to log hours, and so we're trying to restructure so that PE courses mean something for our kids. From a PE department standpoint, PE 1 is the intro to all the other things, and they're assuming physiological development. If a student does it in cyber, we don't have the physiological development, so they're jumping into an advanced PE course without the baseline and foundational knowledge that our PE department's trying to put in place there. So we'd like to remove that cyber option unless there is a medical exemption for the student. The third piece there are the addition of some new courses. We have Anatomy and Phys II. We are looking at offering AP Language and Composition for our juniors, and then also for our seniors. So juniors that are going on a college track may take honors in 9th and 10th, AP Lang and Comp in 11th, and then AP Lit in their 12th grade year. A student who does academic and steps up to honors could then take AP Lang as their senior course as well. So that's kind of a flexible option for levels in 12th grade, but it is a course that adequately prepares our kids for reading and writing at a college level. We've also looked at adding some Project Leadway Computer courses. There are two new classes coming next year. We don't have the curriculum yet, I believe it comes out in January. So we put both of those in, knowing what it's going to be like, we just don't have the full base, but that will add to our computer program. And the other thing that the math department created was a two-credit Algebra I course. We serve our lower level in terms of academic growth students very well, and our upper level, but there's a middle level that needs additional support that we can't provide. And for biology, they get two full semesters of bio before they take the Keystone. In English, they get two full semesters of English, and in algebra, they get one. So we're looking at trying to create an equal playing field so that every student taking that assessment has the two-credit option. The way we're going to place students into that for the pilot is look at their growth projection data from PVAS and individually invite the student into the course, so that we can look at providing support to the students that need it the most, where we can help them grow and meet success. This model was in place several years ago, and it was very successful. In fact, the scores you've seen for this year on the SPP reflect the last group that went through that. So the math department believes that they have a program that will work for those kids. The last piece up there is that career internship. Students in the CT program or in a career pathway right now have DO as an option, but if they go out and want to do a live internship, say, at a, as a paralegal in a legal office, there's no way to provide them credits for that. So we added a one-to-two-credit career internship, similar to DO, for a student who chooses a career pathway to get experiential learning in their senior year. Modification of some courses, CTE has the blending of their introductory levels, and then the fine arts and PE are blending their prior courses, so that's where handling the standalone half-credit. So what used to be Guitar I, Guitar II, is now Guitar. Piano I, Piano II, now Piano. So all we did was blend into a larger course. And the last piece there is modifying prerequisites for PE. They're requesting for certain courses that 10th grade PE be taken in order to take the upper-level electives, again, because of physiological development. If a student's going to be taking an advanced strengthening addition in class, and Mr. Graves, he has a high expectation for their body frame and how they're going to be operating in that course every single day. They need to have some physical activity leading up, or it's not going to be a safe place for them. So they've added in that elective base for students taking certain upper-level electives to try to provide that development. The last piece up here, just so you can see the timeline real quick, we actually started back in September with talking with our departments about what we want to do, reviewing the current Course of Studies, and then later in September, we started meeting with our department chairs. So they had to provide me by the end of September their draft copy, and then in October, every department chair and I sat down and had an individual meeting where we talked about their Course of Studies, the pathways, how students move from class to class, how it integrates, so that we understood we were creating a school-wide model, not simply departmental models. And then in November, we actually finalized the revision of the Course of Studies for the 17, 18 school year, and then we took it to the, oh, sorry, we did a final review that last day on the 9th, and then we took it to the Curriculum Committee that week for them to review. So our goal was really to get as much voice as possible. Our departments had a lot of say in this and a lot of back and forth. To say they would all agree with each other would not be true in any school at all, but to actually, and Mr. Benton can probably back this up, I've never seen so much unilateral support for some of the decisions made of this as we saw this year. We asked, "Would you guys like to do this?" And we got resounding cheers in the room for doing some of the moves. So we've worked very closely letting our department chairs and our staff really develop a course that they believe works for our kids, and I think that's what you have in front of you. Our timeline going forward that we'd like to see, we're presenting to you tonight, but we'd like to start building online. One of the things we'd like to do is build an online scheduling model for our kids, not just print that paper copy. So if a student goes in and selects, eventually we'll select my career path as Athletic Trainer, they click it, it will open up the elective courses that best fit an athletic trainer mindset, so it'll actually tailor it to the kids' needs. The initial build will simply be getting all the courses online, so a student can say, "I want to look at social studies," they can click, select their grade, and it drops down all the courses that are available for that grade level. So that way, kids and parents have consistent access to the book other than just the printed copy. Also, if anything changes or we find mistakes, we can update it rather than putting inserts into a paper copy of it. We still plan to print paper copies of it for all of our staff in the 8th graders so that they have something to bring home. Other piece here, we're asking you guys to approve it in January. By approving that in January, that's going to allow us to a couple things. One, we have our scheduling nights that month with 8th graders and then our nine through 11, or nine, yeah, 9th through 11th students. So our ability to do scheduling nights with an actual Course of Studies changes our ability to provide them relevant information, not "we think this is coming." The other piece here is that we need to build that site and those professional learning plans. Without some Course of Studies in hand, it's hard to do that. The piece we're looking for is actually February and March, then, to move the timeline up. Last year, I got numbers for our kids in mid-March. April or so, we started to look at the scheduling model and started to cut some stuff, meaning Mr. Cherry talking about staffing. We weren't able to start building our master schedule until mid-May, which meant we spent the entire summer building without the staff there to provide feedback as we were looking at things in their departments. By moving the approval up to January, we can start in February, which allows us to get numbers at the end of March, which allows us to start our build in March. get numbers at the end of March, which allows us to start our build in March, which allows us to actually hopefully complete the schedule, if this works, by June. So our timeline now is by April through June, we can finalize and build. Does that mean every kid has 100% eight-credit schedule in June? No, because there's still going to be things that have to be worked out by individual counselors. But by the end of the school year, our goal should be for our kids and our community that every kid has a draft schedule to work off of, and what we're doing during the summer, our schedule changes, not schedule creations. And so by moving the timeline up, that allows us the time to be able to do that going forward. And with that, I'm at the end. Any questions from you guys?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, how much guidance will these students get? I'm just thinking of the freshmen coming in who, you know, is being asked to look at different career options and saying, "Okay, this is what I want to be when I grow up," and having their courses kind of laid out for them, and then getting to the end of their sophomore year and being like, "Oh, my gosh, I don't want to do this at all." So how much guidance is going to be provided for these students along the way?
The goal now with our ninth grade class, they're going to get a little bit of an intro by doing the first PLP. The hope would be that these kids go through, so we kind of as a staff learn the process. The first class to really use it in full will be the class coming in next fall. The guidance should not only come from our counselors, it should come from our staff. So the way we've looked at this is that if a kid says, "I want to be a chemist," they should be talking to our chemistry teachers about what courses best meet that need. If a student wants to change that along the way, we've built the elective so that they actually translate across multiple career pathways. So it's not like, "I took this, I'm stuck." They can move across very fluidly and still be within their pathway program. From a guidance standpoint, the hope would be in ninth grade advisory. We spend the year in ninth grade really building the understanding of career explorations, the career model. They won't choose their academy pathway until their 10th grade year. So they'll have an entire year of working with the staff, with our counselors, with their advisor, really developing their plan forward, and then the goal is every year after that, that advisor they're stuck with, and I won't say stuck, but that they're with for three years, they're able in those three years then to help guide that student every single year. I used to teach in that model, and I would have kids come to me in their 11th grade year and go, "I don't want STEM anymore, I want business." The beauty of the model was, a lot of the business stuff matched the engineering because engineers have to know business. And so a lot of their electives translated, and then what we did is we were able to support them as they transferred over to a different pathway.
And I could, I mean, I'm glad to hear that there will be that support. I guess I worry about, some about the kids who are not necessarily the best advocates for themselves, that they're not going to go to a teacher and say, "Hey, can you help me explore this?" So just making sure that everybody has the guidance.
Well, and that's part of the reason why we're doing it this year on a dry run. The most important component there is actually the advisors themselves. When you have 18 students that you work with for three consecutive years, then you should know your kids better than anyone else in that building, and they should be the one that can help a kid who can't advocate. If my kids couldn't advocate for themselves, my job was to advocate for them and help them understand how to do it. But by doing it this year, we're able to help our staff understand the expectation without being, "Here you go," and that's my fear, saying, "Here you go," without the ability to, because that's not a natural role. As teachers, we do it, and educators, but it's not something we naturally step into. So we're hoping to build that capacity.
A few questions. The medical exemption for phys ed for online, or for cyber, what will drive that? What's a medical exemption look like? You talking like a doctor's note or a parent's request, or what?
So, an example, where I came from in Maryland, in order to get out of PE, you had to take physical education in a physical way. You were not allowed an exemption without medical exemption. It had to be a doctor's note, and our expectation would be it would be a doctor's note, not a note, "My kid got hurt." One of the things we talk about, an example, a student who has a cardiac condition, that student may not be able to participate in physical activity without harming themselves. That's a medical exemption for us. We have students who get long-term injuries, that's a medical exemption. What we're not looking at is, "I got the flu for three days, therefore I need cyber because I missed three days of PE." We're looking at injuries or medical conditions that make the student physically unable to participate in a safe way in a physical education course.
All right. Second question is, on this career pathway online program that you want to develop, I think it's a great idea. I think any opportunity like that where a student might have a little bit of an idea where they want to go but just don't know how to make it happen, I think that's a great plan. My question is, who's going to develop that? Is that going to be developed in-house, here?
It's actually a pretty complicated process. Mr. Benton and Mr. Barnes have been working for about two months now to start developing the process. We met with guidance counselors two weeks ago and laid out the first four academies. We sat and looked after students had done it. Students have now looked and said, "These academies make sense to me." We've now sat and said, "Okay, these are titles that make sense to us." And now what we'll be doing for the rest of this year is really looking at what kind of careers fit under each academy, and then talking to the experts that we can work with. Mr. Benton's using his OAC to bring some expertise from outside. We're talking to the students to make sure they understand when we put it in context. It's not our language that they don't get, that if a student reads, "This is my pathway," they know that that's where it fits. So we're working with as many partners as we can to try to develop it. The reality is that you can launch an academy program in a year. We purposely aren't, we're doing it over four. So what we're looking at is the ninth grade class comes in, they do ninth grade academy while we're building the 10th. When they go to 10th, we build the 11th, so we're building a year ahead of them and letting the class before and them help us shape it while we're exercising the ability to use our partners to try to help build those pathways.
The outside intervention there, the outside help on that, that would be colleges themselves getting to weigh in on this and saying, "Yes, this is a..."
Correct, and that's the OAC partner piece through our occupation advisory. You know, that's looking at, in your pathway, in your industry, what do you think kids need to be successful in your career? And helping us continue, because over time, you have to keep developing. You can't develop them once and go, "All right, that's the career pathway," because as the career develops and adapts, we have to adapt with it. And so that's the goal of bringing that team in to continue to look and review and revise.
Any other questions from board members? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wassler. Okay, moving on our agenda, the next item was student report. I don't believe we have any students here with us tonight. So we'll move on to our public comment period. This is for items on or off the agenda. If you have any statements you would like to make, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. This would be a three-minute period. Okay, seeing nobody in motion, we'll move on to board's presidents' communication. Executive sessions, we will be having an executive session immediately following tonight's meeting to address some personnel matters that have arisen. Under other communication items, I just want to thank everybody, particularly Mr. Cherry and everybody in this room that was involved in putting tonight's event together. I thought it was very nice, very nicely done. It was great to see all these business owners come out and support, you know, the district, so great job on that. And again, I want to thank the board for their confidence in me. Try to do my best for everybody here and make us all Dover proud, so. With that, any other comments or observations from our board members tonight?
I just wanted to mention that I had talked to Amy before dinner tonight about, we were, there was some discussion about the broadcasting center, or whatever they're calling it, and I was hoping before we'd vote on that, that we could try to elicit some money from WPT, okay, from Fox 43. So Amy and I talked about it, and because she may have a little bit more say because